Go ahead. I'm not sure, Jackie, are you going to be introducing this and leading it? It's Wednesday, April 5th. Our work session at this point is the 2022 Annual Reviews and Dockets. We have a long ways to go in hearing about the 18 items before us, so please begin.
Wonderful, thank you. Good morning again. And again, this will be Jose presenting the annual review and dockets for 2022. And I would like, if we could add, I think Chris Cook is in the attendee list. Could we have her moved into the panel by chance before we get started? Awesome, there, I see her there. Okay, thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and hand it over to Jose and we'll take direction from council on when, if you need more information or you would like to pause, so you just let us know as we move forward through the slides. Jose?
Okay. Next slide, please. Okay, again, good morning, Councilor Jose Alvarez with Community Planning. So we'll provide a background on the annual reviews and dockets, accumulative analysis of the proposed changes to the comprehensive plan map, the planning commission recommendations, and the next steps. Next slide. So so under the Growth Management Act, the county can accept and adopt a packet of changes to its comprehensive plan once a year. And there are two processes to receive these requests. Those are the annual reviews and dockets. The annual reviews are site-specific requests that are made by the individual property owners. And you can see here that we received three of those requests. And one was a map related but as a concomitant rezon agreement. It was previously done, and there was agreement that they're looking for release of. The docket process provides a means for suggested improvements. Sorry, next slide. The docket process provides a mean for suggested improvements in the comprehensive plan and development regulations that could be submitted by interested persons, hearings examiners, and staff of other agencies. Once an annual review application has been submitted or docket item's been added to the our work program, staff reviews the proposal, provides a recommendation to the planning commission, the planning commission reviews that and then provides a recommendation to county council. The council will hold a hearing on each of the annual review and docket items and issues a final decision. As I said, the annual reviews are property owner-initiated and site-specific, and the dockets are county-initiated items for suggested improvements to codes, comp plan, and all documents adopted by the by reference to the comp plan. Next slide, please. So this is the list of docket items. The there were six capital facilities plan updates from the school districts. There was a Louisville mapping error, and these are text amendments to the comp plan, update of the capital facilities financial plan, arterial atlas amendment, 179 access and circulation plan that you discussed last week, amendments to the countywide planning policy amendment procedure, and then there's a code amendment for the planning commission review process and some codes relating to the essential citing of essential public facilities. Next slide, please. So this slide is showing the different comprehensive plan and zoning designations and distinguishing between the the type four comprehensive plan amendments that are the subject of the annual reviews and dockets. And those are changes of the comp plan designation. So as you can see, going from urban low-density residential to any of the other categories, the urban medium or urban low is a complaint amendment, changes within the box. So in the urban low-density, we have five different zones. So those zones, changing from R15 to R120, would be a type three, which would go through the hearings examiner, quasi judicial process. Next slide, please. So in county code, there are criteria for all comprehensive plan map changes. And staff's required to evaluate the proposal to meet all five of these growth management criteria. And in order to receive a staff recommendation of approval, they all have to be met. Next slide, please. And then there's additional criteria for specific changes. If there's rural map changes or surface mining overlay under O there, there are additional criteria that have to be met, and those would all be addressed in the staff report. Next slide, please. So the cumulative analysis. Before you have hearings on each of the requests, we're required to, the county's required to assess the cumulative impact of all of the proposed plan map changes prior to council taking action. The cumulative report summarizes all of the proposed requests for a given year and the net change in acreage if the council was to approve all of the requests. Can you go to the next slide, please? Small, hope you can see that, but we did provide a document that summarizes the cumulative analysis. And so this chart is just that summary of the net changes in acreage. There's a total of 80, a little over 80 acres that are proposed for changing. Forty-six of those are related to the surface mining overlay. As you can see, there's a, on the bottom line, there's a net reduction of 25 acres in the commercial category, net increase of about three-quarters an acre for urban low residential, and about a 29 acre increase in the urban medium density residential, and a net loss of five acres for industrial and a net increase of 47 acres for surface mining overlay. Next slide, please. So the 18 items, we have set five hearing dates of beginning May 2nd and running through July 18th for five hearing dates with multiple items in each hearing. Start with the capital facilities plans for the schools on May 2nd and and the capital facilities financial plan along with that. May 16th, the Cardi Hill is tentative, and I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to that item. So in May, we also have the text amendments and Scrivener's errors. Next slide, please. And then you can see in June and July what the items scheduled. There are, there are a couple of items, and I'll discuss a little more, that are going to the planning commission this month and then one next month. And so those will be later in the process in the essential public facilities and some of the procedure amendments and code amendments that are going to planning commission this this month. Next slide, please. So there are six docket items listed on this slide that all relate to the school district capital facilities plans and impact the updates. Each school district's proposal is considered a separate docket item and will be at your separate item for May 2nd. It's going to be presented to you one at a time for separate deliberation and voting. Today's just to give you some background information that's applicable to all of these proposals and not really discussing them individually. As you can see the slide, the planning commission voted to approve each of the six capital facilities plans and associated impact fees. Next slide, please. So so the 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 school districts are required to update their capital facilities plans every sort of six years, and that's under RCW 3670A to offset the impacts of growth and and school facilities. It also requires that these plans and programs be reviewed and approved as part of the county and city comprehensive plans in which the school district's located. So these capital facilities plans are adopted by each of the school district and goes through their board and councils and then comes to the county and then also the corresponding jurisdiction where where there are land to to have this this growth and where the schools are located. So the CFPs sort of identify the facilities that needed for the growth over the next six 20-year forecast. It includes a financial plan that identifies the funding needed for those facilities. In this slide, we've also highlighted links where you can go to specific RCWs and our county code that explains the RCWs in the code section, and then also the county evaluation and and criteria that's explained in our code. The impact fees are one component of the funding plan. It applies only to new residential development, and it can only be spent on the facility needs related to growth, and the calculations are explained in that code section. Next slide, please. Sort of a high-level summary of that impact fee calculation is cost of the facilities that are attributed to the new growth per housing unit. It considers the number of children per household and also the how the housing type. It excludes the or subtracts the state match funds and the tax credit and a 15% adjustment that's in in the formula. So as you can see, there's a variety of different school districts. Host fees in battleground, it's $10,760 to the 68% change, canvas, well, again, there's single-family and multifamily rate. So in the proposed fee column, you can see what the proposed fees are and then the the difference and the percent change for all of the six school districts that are requesting updated capital facilities plan. And these are all derived from the 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 formula that's in the statute.
Is the column in yellow, impact fee?
Yes, so that would be the the updated school impact fee if it were to be adopted. Any questions about that one? Let's go to the next slide.
Yes, go ahead, counselor.
Yes, actually, before we get too much more deeply into this, I had a couple of questions going back. I understand this is something that's done annually. The date is 2022. So is it generally that this carries over to the next year? Or did we? Did we? Did we miss an opportunity last year? What why are why are we doing 2022 and 2023?
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Well, if this is an annual review, the date is the 2022 annual reviews. Is is that that this is carried over from last year? And then are we doing additional ones for 2023?
So the 2022, the or the annual reviews? I'll I'll talk about the annual reviews. So our process typically would be that that the the year that we receive the application is 2022. We do pre-application in the in the fall. So these items, the annual reviews, had pre-applications at in the fall of 2021. They submitted an application in by January of 2022. We process that through the year. Since the council's extended the period for reviewing these, and so that's why we're creeping into the end of 2023 with these, the process has been expanded over time. Historically, we would have been done by the end of 2022. But since we can only update the plan once a year, the last time we have updated these were, I believe, July of 2022. So that's why the the delay and we're in into deeply into 2023. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and and then on page six, you indicate which changes would fall under a type three or a type four, but with the industrial zoning, is that the type three?
So those those categories, if you wanted to change between business park and light industrial or railroad industrial, it would be a type three change, and it wouldn't be a legislative change that's heard by the council. It would be something that's heard by the hearings examiner.
Thanks.
The proposed change in the impact fee, this is a simple question for you. There is quite a bit of difference from one jurisdiction to another. Who has proposed the particular number that we see there for the the new fee?
The school districts.
And they do that
Based on the formula, they they do that based on the formula, their projections for new kid, new new children in the district and the growth that's projected.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so the next slide. So the next item is updated, the capital facilities financial plan. This is intended to identify funding sources for capital facilities provided by the county itself. It covers some of the facilities like transportation, parks and open space, the stormwater drainage, water quality, county buildings and other facilities. The RCW requires that the county have a six-year financial plan that will finance those capital facilities and the projected funding capacities and identifying the source of money to be used for those purposes. The updated capital facilities financial plan is financial data from the six-year transportation improvement plan, the six-year county parks, recreation and open space plan that were both adopted by council in 2022. The planning commission recommended approval six to zero and heard that last month. Okay, so Cardi Hill is a annual review that we received and went to the planning commission, planning commission recommended denial three to two. At that same time, there was an appeal of the CIPA that was issued, the DNS. Given the outcome of our appeal from last year for Chilachi Bluff, the responsible official is withdrawing the determination of non-significance for this item and is going to be issuing a determination of significance. And that is going out today. That is going to require that an environmental assessment be done by the applicant in conjunction with the county and that it's likely that this item will not be heard this year until that environmental analysis is completed. This project will essentially be on hold. Are any questions about that? Okay. Again, we'll come back to this item when that environmental assessment is done, but the see, so the CPZ 2022 001
Chair? Yes, go ahead, counselor.
I actually have a question on this. And so would this, at what point do things just get rolled over to the comprehensive plan update? And I wonder if this comes up next year, wouldn't that just be all part of the comprehensive plan update rather than an individual application?
Well, yeah, I it's an individual application. Apparently, it's just an individual application. If there's direction to consider it as part of the update, that would be something that would come from council.
Chair, I have a comment.
Go ahead, please.
So last council, we took a look at this issue, the surface mine overlay, because there's a lot of history here. Staff dedicated almost a whole year with and a task force took almost a whole year to come up with the last comprehensive zoning overlays for for mining. And there were a lot of omissions, commissions. Some of the planned overlays did not expand, some of them didn't exist. And on the other hand, there were some pop-ups that worked its way into the plan. So the council was hearing in great measure from the building industry because it costs money that adds to affordability. If they have to ship it from out of the city, we lose sales tax when it comes from south of the river. So we're almost out of mineable material in this county. And we started the process of, okay, we need to dig into this. We had three votes to move forward. We need to revise the surface mining overlay. And then it just died, and now we have a new council. And I don't know that we've made any progress. So we've got the tail wagging the dog for these proposals that pop up, and some of them are in really poor locations. I'm not making a comment specifically about Cordell, but but we need to come up with an overarching look at what we have in place now and where are the best locations where we have mineable material that's not going to interfere or be a bad mix with development? So I, so where are we at on that? Where but where did we lose that initiative? Over a year ago, we we teed it up, we voted to do it, and then it just, this is the first, I'm seeing it again. That was a question. I mean, is it on your radar screen to to redo the the overlay? Because we we did it, you know, obviously, the motive force varies from council to council. And this is April already. Okay, well, maybe we can talk about it offline because I don't want to
So, Councilor
We're already half an hour behind schedule here.
Yeah, Councilor Medici, I'll follow up with staff and we'll get back to the council.
Look, Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time, maybe it isn't, but I would like to see this just rolled into the comp plan update because that's that's where we're headed. This is a controversial site. I think it'd be good to take a look across the county and revise that map just as you were suggesting, Counselor Medici.
I also would be supportive of taking an overall look at it and being comprehensive rather than project by project if however that process needs to unfold.
Jose, I think you can continue with the presentation.
Okay, thank you. So this complaint text amendment is clarifying that the the update that was done in 2014 that was alluded to when we updated the surface mining overlay code. There was a change in the code that required the extraction of mineral resources to be a conditional use permit. And there's language in our call plan that was not updated to reflect that it is a conditional use permit. And so we are proposing to amend that so it's consistent with the code. And I think this was an issue that was brought up in appeal of the Chilachi Bluff. We took this to the planning commission and they recommended approval six to zero. Next slide. This is CPZ 2022 0018 Louisville Scrivener's error. If you can see the map there, there's a a narrow green line that runs north-south. And this is about 1.2 acres. It's zone R5, and it's a budding the site of the Louisville mine. The property owners noticed when they were coming in for pre-application conference that this parcel did not have surface mining overlay on it, and they thought it they they thought it historically did. Staff with GIS help looked at that and determined that it was, it it did have a surface mining overlay going back to pre-1994, and it was omitted at some time around the 2014 update of the surface mining overlay, but there was no specific change that we could find that removed the overlay on this property. And so we were just correcting the Scrivener's error. Again, the planning commission heard this and made a recommendation to approve it six to zero. Next slide. So this is O L R 2022 0016. This is Three Creeks North. The proposal is to change the current comp plan designation from general commercial and mixed use to urban medium office residential, 22 units an acre. And there are two parcels that total 26.7 acres. Just to point out that sort of the very northern tip of this shape looks like an elephant to me, and the trunk is pointing up, and that trunk portion is the And that trunk portion is the sort of point oh four acres that's mixed use. And so this is likely sort of the the profile that trunk is going to be the extension of Northeast 15th Avenue from 179th Street. So the planning commission recommended approval four to one. Within this, there was a discussion of some of the impact fees with associated with 179th and the lifting of urban holding. There's a memo created by Public Works that was discussed with the planning commission. There's some confusion surrounding that. I've spoken with Ken later and Public Works. And that memo can be folded into your discussion. That'll be upcoming about the fees and the fiscal impacts of what are what's going on with 179th. So I just wanted to clarify that. Next slide, please.
Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Councilor.
I have a quick question. And I listened to the planning commission on this one. And I think there's some really, there's some real concerns here. And it sounded as though there were questions about this change related to funding for I-5 interchanges around 179. So I just suggest we take a real close look at this one in particular.
Yes. And again, for all of these items, the planning commission recommendations will be provided to, will be posted on our webpage and provided to council 15 days before each of the hearings as they come up. O L R 2022 dash 0016 Zaliosko Nail is another annual review proposal to change the zoning from R16 to community commercial. This is, the the two red parcels there are just north of, they're they're on the north side of Minnehaha. And it's just west of Andreson. So the road north-south here is Andreson. And so there's a commercial area here. And these are two existing homes. And the proposal is to go to commercial. There is a signalized intersection here. So it's about just less than two acres. And the planning commission recommended approval six to zero. Next slide, please. So CPZ 2022 0015 is an update to the countywide planning policy amendment process. This proposal is to clearly outline the process for the countywide planning policy amendments and to better implement RCW 3670A and the WAC there. The planning commission will be hearing this April 20th for hearing. They'll have a work session tomorrow, April 6. And we will have the recommendation and bring that to council. Okay, the CPZ 2022 0016 is a code amendment to 4510040. And this is to clarify that all proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan and development regulations require review before the planning commission. There's some language in there that can be interpreted currently that it may not be needed. So we just want to clarify that it is required and to be consistent. State statute. And again, this is going to be before the planning commission on the 20th and be discussed at the work session tomorrow. Next slide, please. So the essential public facilities code, the Growth Management Act requires that the comprehensive plan and development regulations include a process for identifying and citing essential public facilities. Provided a link there in the RCW and the WAC that discusses what types of facilities those are. And there's a range of those. Were required, the GMA requires that the no comprehensive or development regulations can preclude the sighting of these essential public facilities. The term refers to public facilities that are typically difficult to cite. And consistent with the planning policies, counties and cities should create their own list of essential public facilities to include. Some of these facilities range from sort of citing jails, airports, transportation facilities as examples. There are, so they're already in our code and we're working to make sure that it's all encompassing. And we'll have those recommendations. Again, we are think we're, do Jackie push this back to June? We're looking at going, oh, no, for the planning commission, we're looking at May. Yeah, we push that back from April to May. And then we'll come forward to the council with their recommendation. Next slide. So CPZ 2020 0013 is an arterial atlas amendment, Northeast 176. As you can see, the map on the top has a proposed road connection. And the property owners and developers of that area have come forward requesting that this be removed in order to find that their arterial atlas can be amended. There has to be a need for the proposed change. The proposed conceptual site plan on the bottom there shows the removal of Northeast 176 based on the development. There's going to be a reconfiguration of 179th and I-5, which is going to remove the connection from Union Road, which is the road on the west side. And so there's not going to be an access with 179th. So the recommendation was to approve the removal of the arterial atlas amendment. There will still be a connection made and circulation will still be required in that area. And it's it's believed that that can, the circulation can be achieved without the arterial connection required there. The planning commission reviewed this last month and recommended approval six to zero. The 179th Street Access Management and Circulation Plan. You had the discussion last week at the work session. This was an item that had gone to planning commission last year. And they made a recommendation to approve those changes via vote of six to zero. But there isn't any significant change in the management and circulation plan. So there's no need to go back to the planning commission. And so this will be be coming before you with the planning commission approval from from last year. Next slide, please. CPZ 2020 0017 is the Austin Heritage Covenant Release. The proposal is for the business park designated land that's in the center to revert to R15, to to change from R15 to R18 on one parcel that's five acres. This is stemming from a previous annual review in maybe 2014 that changed the zoning of about 90 acres here from mixed use to a combination of R17, R18, the community commercial there and the business park. The, there was a, an agreement that the the land that was designated business park could revert back to R175 and R18 if there was no development that was done in a five-year timeframe. And so the owners of the property are coming back and want to execute that agreement to turn it back to the residential uses. The R175 that was in the document is proposed to go to R15, which is consistent with the development or the the size of the lots in the development they surrounding it. It was done as a planned unit development. So a lot of the lots are smaller than the 7,500 square foot. So the planning commission reviewed this and made a recommendation to approve six to zero. Next slide, please. So the next steps, the work session today. And then there'll be, like I said, five subsequent council hearings, two in May, two in June and one in July. Again, we'll have those materials 15 days before the hearing. They'll be posted. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to address those. And then the, if all of the approvals will go on an adopting ordinance that will come to council and will be on consent agenda August 15. That concludes the presentation. If you have any questions, be.
Thank you, Jose. One, just one question for me. I was concerned about there being 18 items discussed today because I didn't realize that it would be presented more as a list. I thought there was going to be a discussion of the items and the meaning behind it, et cetera. Of course, there there was not, which thankfully, it's 10:40 a.m. rather than 10:40 p.m. I guess we should be happy about that. But we still need, in order for the vote not to be superficial, for there to be that kind of discussion on each item. This was to be the work session. So when now does that come? Does it come at the at the hearing?
Yes, so we will present more detailed information at the hearing. And you will have public comment for the annual reviews where we have an applicant. Generally, the staff does a presentation. And then the applicant will do a presentation or advocate for their proposal. And then you'll open it up to the public. And then the council will have their discussion, their deliberations and make a decision. For the dockets, we'll have the same process, except there typically won't be an applicant. The county staff will have a more detailed presentation of the items. And you will get, like I said, those items before the hearing, two weeks before the hearing. And so if you have any particular questions that you want to have addressed, we'll be glad to address those before the hearing or give you any information you need before that time.
Thank you. And council, do you have general questions? Or may we move on toward council time? Hearing done, I believe that we may say that the 2022 Annual Reviews and Dockets Work Session has concluded at this point. So thank you very much for the presentation. And I do look forward to the detail that you have talked about. So, council, I have a question for you. It is 10:42. Do you need to take a five-minute break before moving on? And I'll just point out that in addition to council time, we will have a couple of executive sessions in there. So do you need that five-minute break? In this, I am not hearing one single yes. So.
I'd like to be a yes on that.
Okay, you know what? With one yes, let's go for it. So it's 10:43. Let's reconvene at 10:48, right on the dot.
And if we, if we could keep to that, because we we've had presenters patiently waiting since 10.
Thank you.